That would be great. Welcome to our afternoon session of Wednesday, August twenty seventh. Next up, we have our public hearing for our Valley County Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Five Budget Hearing. Clark Miller.
I'm Chairman. Good morning, good afternoon, Commissioners, good afternoon. Not to correct you, but it's for the fiscal year twenty twenty six. That is okay.
It's on the action, yeah, on the agenda.
Correctly, incorrectly.
It's incorrect?
That is my.
Is that a problem at all?
No, it won't be a problem. We're scheduled it for, sorry that we missed that.
I didn't look at the agenda even, to be honest with you, so therefore.
Well, Commissioners, good afternoon. On behalf of the Clerk's Office, we will begin providing you with a presentation regarding the budget that, excuse me, the Budget Workshop, that's where conducted to get or to, I guess finalize and conduct our presentation for a public hearing this afternoon. If I can go to the next slide, just to kind of give you an overall of what the process was for this fiscal year. The Clerk's Office submitted a letter to all of the elected officials and department heads on March eighteenth, twenty twenty five, giving them an overview of the expectations and what we would be requesting. We provide them instructions regarding if there are new positions, the process that needs to take place in which they need to schedule a meeting with the Human Resource Office to develop a job description, kind of an understanding of what position they're looking at adding. We also provide them with their budget worksheets, and then we, next slide. And then we schedule the individual meetings with the elected officials and department heads. And that's where they begin their, their request. They bring their request forms to our office for our office to go over that, go over it with them, ask them general questions. And then we ultimately schedule the workshops with the Valley County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners, elected officials and department heads present new position requests and budget requests to the Valley County Board of County Commissioners during the budget workshops. Valley County Board of County Commissioners review budget requests for sixty different funds. I don't know if everyone understands that the amount of funds that there are, the amount of funds that the Board of County Commissioners are responsible for, for budgeting for, but there are over sixty different funds. That includes the general funds, but also includes the other funds that are utilized. The ARPA, L A C T F, the Court Facilities Fund. So there are sixty funds. Again, a lot of the public is unaware of that. Budget workshops this year began on May seventeenth of twenty twenty five, and the final budget workshop concluded on August sixth of twenty twenty five. We did have some final requests come in or some changes on that sixth of August date that we did incorporate and we did publish those changes that were made. Commissioners, you provide guidance to the Clerk's Office regarding proposed fiscal year twenty twenty six budget. All departments must submit the requests for new positions, as I've indicated, to H R to be vetted, have a job description written, and determine a pay scale. We can't thank our Human Resource Director, Mike Savoy, enough for the effort that he puts into analyzing requested jobs with the elected officials and department heads and conducting his market analysis to determine the appropriate pay scale for those positions. The new positions being requested for fiscal year twenty twenty six are the Fire Mitigation Assistant for the Valley County Fire Mitigation Department, Deputy Patrol Position for the Sheriff's Office, and a Communication Deputy for the Valley County Sheriff's Office. There was also a part-time Recreation Position for the Valley County Recreation Department, and Appraiser for the Valley County Assessor's Office, and then this one was added mid-year, but it was determined based on the change in the pay structure or the moving from a monthly to a bi-weekly pay scale that a payroll specialist was needed. And that was budgeted for for fiscal year twenty twenty six. Converted positions for fiscal year twenty twenty six, and this might, there were existing positions that were modified, for, for lack of better terms. We did call them converting, could also be modified, but there was a Facility Tech position that's, that is budgeted for, and as the Commissioners were made aware, there was a request for that position to be an H VAC certified individual for the Phil's Facilities Department. There was a request for the four-H Assistant Position to be a formal four-H Coordinator Position in order for the University of Idaho Extension Office to provide two types of programming, I guess. And then lastly, there was a request to convert Patrol Corporal into Patrol Sergeant Positions and converting Detention Deputy into Detention Corporal Positions. And then lastly, converting a Communication Deputy into a Communication Lead for the Valley County Sheriff's Office.
Clark Miller, you know, one thing I just want to point out too, so when they submit those requests to H R, they have to meet our star too. I think that's really important that the public knows we have a strategic plan. These positions all have to prove how they make our service better, make us more transparent, accountable, and responsive to the public. So that's, that was an important step that the county added a number of years ago, and I appreciate that also.
After all of the requests are made, the Chief Deputy Clerk enters in all the budget requests into the financial software. Myself and Gabrielle analyze a projected revenue and projected cash forward for fiscal year twenty twenty six and enter the projected figures into the financial software. We also consult with the Treasurer on projected revenue and projected cash forward to make sure that we agree what those amounts are based on our, our statements, our, make sure that our statements are balancing together. The Clerk's Office works with the Assessor's Office to determine the net taxable market value and the new construction values. We obtain that information from the Assessor's Office. And then the Clerk's Office prepares the L two worksheets for tax year twenty twenty six for all taxing districts within Valley County. That includes the Valley County L two worksheet. Commissioners, this is the fifth year of the Capital Improvement Committee, and it's the fifth year of utilizing the Capital Improvement Committee to review capital improvements, equipment for expenditures in fiscal year twenty twenty six. Capital Improvement Request Form must be completed for any project expenditures over twenty-five thousand to be scored by the Capital Improvement Committee. And then ultimately, those recommendations are made by the Capital Improvement Committee to the Commissioners. And on the next slide is the capital improvements that have been requested for fiscal year twenty twenty six. The only one that was potentially going to be expended this year was the hot water boiler. If you recall, there was a request to potentially replace that now because of the concern that we were only on one boiler. Yeah, I don't know if, what Facilities has decided, if they have obtained any quotes. But that is a capital improvement that might be done this year. All of the other requests have been submitted to the Commissioners and were budgeted for for fiscal year twenty twenty six. The next slide just kind of breaks out a graph of the majority of the capital improvement requests were from the Road and Bridge. With next is Motor Pool, Buildings and Grounds, Sheriff, excuse me, how they would be funded. And then lastly, Pilt. Commissioners, what we provided are the handouts that I gave to you. This just is the actual budget comparison report. The first one is for the expenditures. The next one is for revenues. These are available to the public, have been posted on the websites, and this is what was utilized to develop the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget. I would like you first go to the dashboard. Commissioners, if I can just walk up to the screen, so as you are fully aware, any taxing district only has the ability to increase the amount that they levy by three percent. And then by new construction, the new construction value for this year was two hundred and fifty-nine million four hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. So Commissioners, the three hundred and one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars is the three percent that is is the increase, and then the new construction increase is two hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. So the total increase that the county can levy for is five hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. So truly, this increase that's allowed is allowing us to fund a portion of those new positions that were added. So it's.
New positions and our salary increases? Or do we need?
Yeah, we're needing all of that really for the new positions.
That's those four positions that we're underneath.
Those are those new created positions that were presented on slide number six? So the.
Yeah, these down at the bottom here.
Now, all of those. Those are the ones that were just the amended ones, the ones right there, all of those.
These we've already done. These are new, that haven't, haven't been done yet.
They're all, all new. They start October first, starting with Fire Mitigation.
We haven't hired a Facility Tech yet. But it's in the budget.
We haven't hired those other ones yet. But these are all the new positions.
The, the new positions are the Fire Mitigation Assistant, the Deputy Patrol, the Part-Time Recreation, the Appraiser, and then the Payroll Specialist.
Those are all.
Those are brand new.
Brand new, operating right now.
They're, they're not in existent in the budget. Based on our, based on the requests that have been made from the departments, these are positions that are being asked to be funded for next fiscal year. And what I'm just trying to point out is that the county is only able to increase the amount that they levy by three percent in new constructions. These positions that have been presented are more than five hundred thousand dollars, right? So realistically, you're, you're using that to fund these new positions. And then the existing levy that are, you're able to fund the existing operations, salaries and everything else, including the revenue that's brought in. I may not be explaining this very well, but I'm, I'm trying to at least share with the public that the funds that are being added on to the county's ability to levy are going to be utilized to fund the new positions. You can look at it that way.
So those, okay, I'm following you. New creations that are requested. But all those, all the way down to Payroll Specialists, they're already hired and in, in the system right now.
The, the only one.
Payroll Specialist is Christina.
She's the only one that's been hired, and we hired her mid-year and funded out of Pilt until the budget kicks in October first. And then she will just be a part of the regular.
So none of the rest have been hired?
Mara has not hired, Dave hasn't hired, Sheriff's Department hasn't hired. And the Appraiser hasn't hired. Those are all brand new positions.
All brand new that haven't, uh, okay.
Now, out of that, you know, just for the general public, the Assessor, the Appraiser position was requested from the state because we hit the numbers that we have to in order to provide that. That was outside of our control. Our time recreation position is going to be funded from.
Revenue that once we collect revenue from the horse thief. But until then, we're, we're going to have to utilize a property tax levy dollars to fund the position. Remaining cash.
The Fire Mitigation Assistant is, a lot of that's going to be funded out of grants, so.
Then you're going to be transitioning how you're funding your mitigation director. A lot of moving parts, but again, I just kind of want to.
Okay, I was just curious.
Want to share. If we can go back to the L two.
Some of that, now we're going to be using a little bit more of our savings. Backfill some of these other positions.
So if you can go to the actual worksheet. So Commissioners, with those initial figures that I gave to you, Valley County has the ability, the maximum amount that Valley County has to levy. The new, excuse me, the three percent is three hundred and one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And then the new construction is two hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars that goes on to the role that the county can levy for. So the maximum amount that Valley County can levy for is ten million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. And based on the proposed budget, Valley County will need to levy all of those available dollars to fund the existing budget for fiscal year twenty twenty six. Next tab, please. And we've broken it out. For the General Fund, the amount to be levied would be eight million, forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. For the Airport Fund is twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. District Court, six hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. The Health District, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighteen. Fairgrounds is sixty thousand. Revaluation is eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five. Weeds, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-six. Tort, that's for our ICRMP insurance payment, three hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars. And then Veterans Memorial is eighty-five hundred. All of that equals the maximum amount, the ten million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. However, there's always some confusion, well, your budget's forty-two million. So the Valley County's proposed budget is forty-two million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight. But there are several non-levied funds that we do not levy tax dollars for that it's either remaining cash that's used to fund those balances or to fund those. Or there's other revenue that covers the cost of those funds and not property tax dollars.
So that's where we do, will you explain that a little bit further? Because there is a lot of confusion. So just for the general public, for the other Commissioners, we're, this is Catlin's first time going through this too, but I think there was a lot of confusion. Somebody said our budget was only ten million. No, that's what we're levying.
That's correct.
Our budget is forty-two million.
That is accurate.
Just get it from different sources.
Correct. So our remaining cash, the, the the cash forward dollars that we are using to fund fiscal year twenty twenty six budget is eleven million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. That includes our ARPA, that includes the L A C T F. We have not fully expended those funds, so those are accounted for in that remaining cash. The projected revenue that Valley County is projecting to receive is nine million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, oh, excuse me, sixteen million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and four dollars. But that includes, can you go up, Gabby? Sorry. That includes our solid waste fees.
You know, transportation dollars, I mean.
Correct.
Our gas tax, our, any of things that we get as far as federal funding, state funding, all other funding structure.
That is correct.
So all those other funding sources totaled up to that eleven million. It's not being levied.
Correct.
If you look at it.
It's projected revenue.
Right.
From our personal budget, if you thought about that, we start with forty-two million dollars we need. And there, then we just start subtracting everything that we get from all those other buckets. We still have ten million dollars we can't fund any other way, other than going to the taxpayers and getting that from the taxpayers. So we keep that dollar figure as low as we can, but it's all based on revenue streams from other sources, so.
Now, are those streams fixed streams?
Not necessarily, they fluctuate. If you recall, Commissioner Thompson, as we've been informed by the state that their revenue is down, so the money that we get from the state, we projected it at a lower amount for fiscal year twenty twenty six. We, we don't want to rely on that if we're not going to receive it. Is it a? Then you have your building permit fees. We have seen a trend of approximately four hundred and twenty-five thousand in building permit fees, so yes, we conduct an analysis to really make a, 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 I don't want to say we conduct an analysis to make the projections as accurate as we can.
So since the state can't give us as much as we project and we hope for.
We're cutting budget, we're cutting employees.
We're, we're in trouble, sorry. Do we, do we have a carryover? You know, in times of where something might come back?
Yes.
That's, that's.
But it's continues to, to reduce.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I mean, fiscally responsible dog is, I mean, you always use what, six months if we can. Sometimes it's always down to three months. I mean, different counties use different things. But fiscally responsible is you should always keep five to six months in there just to make sure, in case we have a, a natural disaster and we have to come up with funds right away, then.
We always do that in school districts.
Commissioners, I mean, this term is readily used now as Doge. I would encourage someone to Doge Valley County because I truly feel that we are budgeting for absolute needs. That's kind of the philosophy that Valley County has taken over the years. Where the Commissioners have gone above and beyond is with salaries, but we've had to. Commissioners, we were going through our turnover was quite high, even what, four or five years ago, we could not keep employees. So at that point in time, the Commissioners made a valiant effort to work with H R and to increase positions of, increase salaries for positions. So I would say that the Commissioners at that time saw that there was a drastic need because of the amount of turnover that we had, that we had to invest in, in our employees. And the Commissioners took it upon themselves to do that. So the significant, the, the majority of our budget, yeah, is, is definitely salaries, right? That's a significant part. But again, I would go and we always encourage it. Please take a close look. We, Valley County has continued to budget for needs. That, that's been the philosophy from the Commissioners down to all of the elected officials, department heads and staff. Yes, we are levying the maximum amount, but I, unfortunately, that's what Valley County has to do to, to, to fund the budget.
And that's good.
In the Clerk's Office, since I've been here, Clark Miller has been just so good about the budget and making sure that, you know, we aren't just funding wants, we're funding needs. Counties do not have extra money. I don't, you know, when people say you do this, that, or the other thing, it's like, no, we are very legislatively controlled with our budget. They put that three percent cap on. When nine percent was the inflation rate at the time, we were still at three percent budget. So our toilet paper went at nine percent, we get three percent back. You know, I mean, that's just, it's the bottom line. We can't, we, we are very controlled on what we can budget.
Operate with it. It's our budget.
The only real fund we have is the one that we do support community where the, we put the two hundred thousand in there for our grant program this year. I mean, should we not be able to fund in the future?
I guess.
That's your first area you're going to have to cut, but basically you're cutting such needed programming, including transportation, McQuahs, you know, Shepherd's Home, I mean, all of those types of things that we help fund. Our veterans, our seniors, that would be, that would be critical if we had to cut that.
If you want to go to the PowerPoint.
I only have one more budget. I just better be asking questions.
Next PowerPoint slide. While Gabrielle pulls it up, I just, the fiscal year twenty twenty six balance to be levied, as we indicated, is ten million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. If you divide that by the net, the existing, the current net taxable market value of twelve billion, seven hundred and thirty-five million, eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars, the levy rate would be point zero 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 eight two five seven nine, nine two. If you multiply that by a hundred thousand, just to kind of give an example, it would be eighty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents per a hundred thousand dollar value of your home.
That's a reduction from.
It is a reduction by about two dollars.
Yeah, that's awesome.
By about two dollars, and that's. Twelve billion dollars is our set value, and that's not even the final value yet. More than likely, it will stay probably close to that. It might go down just a little bit. But I can assure the Commissioners that twelve billion is probably the it's ma, yeah, almost thirteen billion.
And we were already second lowest in the state for our levy rate. But we'll see where this puts us this year, but our property taxes in Valley County are extremely low for what's happening throughout the state. And we've always taken great pride in that. We try and keep our property taxes low, so.
Commissioners, that concludes the presentation for the Valley County budget. We do also have to discuss, we have to have a budget hearing for Title III funds. Unfortunately, we are not anticipated to get any additional Title III funds for next fiscal year. So we will be there's still going to be a request to utilize any existing funding that's available to do fifty thousand dollars for the Valley County Firewise Grants, if funding allows it. The Community Firewise Education and Outreach Program of twenty-five thousand, and then the Continued Mobile Risk Assessment of forty-nine thousand. This is what we are proposing, the Commissioners and the public, of how we're going to be utilizing the Title III funds.
And we have all of that currently in the budget.
We do.
And we have those funds available for this ne- next fiscal year.
Yes.
It's the next year that we are at zero.
Correct.
Hopefully by then we get something, but I.
Is all that S R S?
Yes.
Title III?
Yep.
It's still locked up in the house. It's awesome.
Getting in contact with Culture and Simpson's Office, can tell you a little bit more about that, but yeah. And the problem is, if we don't get funded, if they don't get it through by the end of this month, our, we will get zero for this next year. So we're out of time for any kind of budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five cycle. So they're not going to backfill that if it's, something's not. So they're not gonna backfill that if it's, something's not approved by the end of the month. We just start working on next year.
It's probably gonna go away if it keeps doing this.
And then we're gonna be suing them.
Commissioners, in conclusion, uh, that finalized our, um, presentation, our, a staff report. Uh, we would like to thank all of the elected officials, all of the department heads, uh, specifically our HR Director, uh, for the work that he, uh, did conducting the analysis um, of the salaries, uh, the Capital Improvement Committee, uh, my Chief Deputy for dealing with me, uh, for, um.
You need it, yes.
Uh, but we, again, in all seriousness, we truly appreciate all of the effort uh, that it takes to, um, to, uh, uh, create a fiscal year budget. Uh, again, we, we truly appreciate the work that the, the commissioners also, um, conducted doing, uh, the, the budget workshop, the budget workshops, scheduling the budget workshops, asking the tough questions. Uh, we definitely need that to continue. Um, and with that, I will stand if there are any additional questions and then.
I also wanted to thank the clerk's office. You guys just do an exemplary job. I talked to other commissioners and we are, we are so blessed to have your team in place, so I thank you very much. And I do thank all of the others that are always involved in the budget. It is the largest lift that the commissioners have is to make sure that we are being fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' funds, so. Commissioner Caldwell, are you online? And do you have any questions?
Yes. Yes, I am here. I don't have any questions. Just wanna again say thanks to Clerk Miller for answer, for answering all my questions throughout the budget season.
Commissioner Thompson.
Well, I appreciate all the answers that I get.
Um, we.
Need a motion to approve?
No, we, uh, Madam Chairman, uh, we, this is just a public hearing to allow the public to voice any concerns that they have. We actually have it scheduled for next week to finally adopt the budget via resolution, uh, as well as the new positions, as well as the proposed salaries, uh, so that will be on the agenda for next week. Uh, thank you.
Mayor, you, you're here from outside the community. Do you wanna give us any input? You're, you're going through your own mess, right?
Yes.
You, uh, Madam Chairman, not to interrupt, uh, you'll just open it up for public testimony.
Like a regular?
Just like a regular public hearing.
Okay, great. Is anyone in the office here to speak on behalf of the budget? In favor? Any opposed? Any that don't care? Being done, there was no one with us, which is very sad. We get a lot of feedback on our budget and yet in my six years, we've had one person in the room entire time for budget, so.
That's true.
It is sad. More people don't engage.
They just wanna know why their property taxes aren't fixing our roads.
No, they don't. Yeah, they, those funds are not used for that. We do not have funding, you know, available to fix our roads.
Nope.
In the budget. It's, and we're capped, so we can't do that, so. Uh, the next on our agenda is a request from the City of Cascade for a seven-day extension for submitting their certification of the tax levy or the L two worksheet. Mayor Nissula, it's good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, Commissioner Moppen, Commissioner Thompson, and Commissioner Caldwell on board. My sympathies, Madam Chairman, for your pass, passing of your dad. That's, that's always.
Bless my dad and my brother in the last eight weeks.
Oh, my gosh.
It has just been a bad year.
To all of that. Well, as you know, we have a loss of our loan. We lost one of our eighteen-year employees, been with us eighteen years. He's Carl, Carl Tomlin, Tomlinson passed away. Um, August tenth, he was camping, he had a heart attack and, um, so that that is probably part of the reason why I'm needing to ask for the extension. Um, we had our public hearing, um, or meant to have our public hearing on our first our second, our first meeting of the month of August. Um, and of course Carl had just passed away that day. I had two city councilmen that were going to be late. And after twenty minutes, they were still late, so I, uh, closed the meeting for a lack of, uh, quorum. And then I, um, uh, said, well, we'll reschedule it and have a formal motion. So we had the meeting on Thursday, the fourteenth, a couple days later. And, um, went through everything and then the newspaper reminded us we had failed to notify them via, uh, because it was a special meeting. So, um, we have to republish everything, which is currently being done because now our s- now our budget hearing will be on September eighth. The certification to the county is due on September fourth. There is a state code and I think I referred to it in the, in the memo that I requested, uh, a seven, it's a seven-working day extension. We don't need a seven-working day extension, but from the fourth to the eighth, we would need that, we would get it turned in on the ninth, so. Um, yeah, so it's been a little bit helter-skelter-y. Well, maybe that's the totally inappropriate word for any of this that's going on. And we are also, our transi- our treasurer is transitioning out, so, um.
You have your hands full too.
Well, it's, you know, it, it is what it is, you know, it just is.
All government, you know, that's, it's tough. People don't understand that. We have a lot of work to do with very few hands.
You know, as a, you know, as a highlight, couple things, just, uh, we have the mixers working in the lagoons and within a week, testing dropped significantly in, in making things improve, so we only have happy thoughts for that, that it's going to get better over time. And also the geothermal well that we tested that's on the city's property is about, um, six hundred gallons a minute. And that translates into twelve hundred and fifty tons of heating energy, which translates to about heating two hundred homes, so.
Is that the one Judy that's next to the, uh, water park? Yeah, he told me that's, he put out a whole lot of gallons a minute and going, seriously?
The, the well driller wished he would have brought a larger pump to accommodate that, so. Um, so we're very excited about that. But anyway, I, the official business that I'm here for is to formally request an extension on that deadline.
Clerk Miller, if I remember you saying we have until the fourteenth to turn it in. If they get it to us on the ninth, you have enough time to be able to still submit.
Absolutely. Sorry to interrupt you.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, uh, through the request from the City of Cascade for a seven-day extension.
And I'll say, uh.
Second? Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, and hopefully that will not happen again next year, but things happen, so.
You have our support.
Appreciate it very much and.
Were you able to replace the gentleman that you lost?
Well, we had hired a fifth person to, you know, take Carl or Steve's place when they decided to retire here. We anticipate that within a year. And so we already had the fifth place filled, but now it's the fourth position. So now we'll be looking for a fifth position and a treasurer, and the library is looking for a library director, so.
towns like us right now, we have a lot of open positions.
Excuse me, and AIC, Association of Idaho Cities, which, you know, Association of Idaho County is kinda the same thing. They're actually going to, um, help us out with a job fair, hopefully September, October-ish, and, um, so because within two years, we're gonna have a lot of people transition, um, for retirement. So I just wanna.
Who was your treasurer?
Keith Latimer.
Okay, oh.
He will, he, he most recent was really strong in IT, worked for the State Insurance Fund. Um, but we pulled him in as treasurer and IT and, you know, there's only eight of us and he was retired when I brought him back out of retirement, so you know, it's, it's, uh, it's a, it's a hard thing, so.
I'll blame him.
The housing issue and all of that will certainly it'll be what it is. It's all you can do.
We have three units coming up. Um, the county has first right to. We do have one person on a waiting list. And so we may have one unit, I don't know. I'll let you know.
Well, I'm hoping that we, um, are able to fill any or all very soon, but.
And actually Ravens Ridge, I was down there. He's got a lot of product down there right now. Really nice-looking stuff, so hopefully.
Yeah, I've, I've toured there. I toured them like two years ago and he was building them and I was pretty impressed with, with the whole thing, but, you know.
Hopefully I'll have some units available. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you.
Commissioners, and I wish you a good day.
You too.
We are going to be doing some water quality stuff where I'll be issuing an invitation very shortly, um, trying to get everybody together just to talk about that, but maybe end of the year.
Well, then I've been on the call with Commissioner Catlin for the event center at the fairgrounds. And very excited about, you know, what I can help with and, and, uh, you know, it takes a village and we're all in the same little village, even though we're not in the same village.
And that's, uh, as I was talking to Judy about, for the hot water for the annex. And I was saying, yeah, the hot water for that event center, you know, there's just lots of opportunities there to save energy and save costs.
They tested the school well, the school well came in at, um, and they did this all yesterday. The school well came in at about four hundred and sixty gallons a minute. And I think the water temperature is seventy. Ours was about seventy, but I guess the gallonage of, of how, that really makes a huge difference in the heating. That's all I know. I mean, I can only re- I can only repeat what I was quoted by our hand hand, and that's all I can, I mean, I know any, I know nothing of what I really speak of. I just it means something to some people who know geothermal, so.
Leave today, kids.
All right.
All right, see you later.
Thank you.
All right, Clerk Miller, if you will put us on hold until two o'clock?
Um, Sheriff wants some.
Okay.
Commissioners, just to bring you guys up to speed with the current weather we've been having, the rain on the fire, uh, containment lines are up over forty percent at this point.
Yay.
I, uh, I ordered the removal of zone five off of, uh, ready.
Okay.
And brought seven to ready from set. So zone six and seven are still in ready just because of the fire so close. And I don't wanna just completely take everything out, but the set is gone and zone five is completely off of any evacuation.
Perfect.
Just so you guys know.
Thank you for that update.
What do they have for containment yet? Do you know yet?
It's about forty-two percent.
Forty-two percent, really?
Yeah, it keeps going up every day and they're hoping to get more. They got a bunch of pumps. There's over seven hundred miles of, uh, of line out, of hose out right now, so they're actually going direct on a lot of it. There's one horseshoe right above, uh, six and seven area that is, they tried to go in and within one hour, they had ten snags fall, so they, they came out of it. It's just not safe to have firefighters in there right now, so. That's not our concern. That's why we stayed at ready on those two, just because until we can make sure we get black containment line around that, we're gonna stay at that. Okay, any questions?
For the update, no.